Welcome, everybody. We will call to order the Grand Forks City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. Item 1.1, roll call, please, Marine.
Wygol. Osowski.
Here.
Weber. Lunskey.
Here.
Gavami.
Yeah.
Sandy.
Here.
And Bean.
Here.
We have a corn.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Item 1.3, got a few announcements, a couple of exciting upcoming events. Tomorrow night, Ultra is gonna place the final beam, so the hospital is at least at the height it's gonna be, so pretty exciting. It's been a, it's taken a while. We've gone through COVID, but we're at least gonna be at that, at that stage and on track to get the construction done. Greenway Takeover Festivals this weekend, that'll be another exciting, that was a great time last year, family-friendly event. The United Way is doing their Tricorers coming up on Thursday this week, so thank you to Shields for hosting that. And the Potato Bowl is back, the French Fry Feed will be back at University Park, so that's exciting. That's taken a couple of years hiatus. With there, it's been a busy few weeks, but happy to get, get going tonight. So with that, we're gonna move on to item number two, which is Citizen Comments. So you'll have to bear with us, we've changed it up a little bit. If you've been paying attention the last couple of weeks, expanded the time a little bit and moved it up in the agenda. And we've got a clock. John Bernstrom got us a clock, so everyone will be aware of the time and where we're at. So Sherry's gonna list, list off the names, then please come forward and feel free to speak as you wish.
Jody Carlson.
Oh, wait.
Ms. Carlson, if you wish you to speak, please.
Now's your time to speak, please.
Good evening to y'all. I, I just wanted to share with you that I was reviewing some things online this week as far as the community of Grand Forks, looking at some of the things that are going on in our community. Really, some really great things that are happening in our community, I, I have to say. I, I appreciate the growth, I appreciate the development. There's a lot of stuff going on with the Downtown Development Association. So that made me very excited. But, and I also appreciate many people stepping up to serve when I see people involved with the downtown development and what's going on, what's going on downtown. I do have to say that with our council, that's where my disappointment lies, and that when secrets and lies start and they continue, then it becomes corruption. Because you're telling lies to cover up previous lies, and when do you ever get out of it? Until someone steps up and comes forward and says that this is not right. I found out recently, last week, that the issue with the police department was not Officer Jennings, according to his own accord that came across my, my post and made a visit to my, to my home, that I did find out that it was actually ordered for him to make a visit to my home. We hear lies about the equipment, we hear lies about the water, lies about a lot of stuff. When does the truth start? I, I have had a few former city employees that have approached me that have talked about the corruption within the city and amongst the city council, them having left for that reason after being, being employees for multiple years for the city, that they have left. They don't want their names being put out in the public. They want to be protected. God bless you, you former city employees that had enough strength to leave what you knew wasn't right. I want to say, coming across a letter from you, Mr. Boczewski, that went out to our governor where it says, and I don't think that people are aware of this, not only is there a 20-year pilot tax incentive that has been granted, we also need to think about the sales and use tax for business, that any supplies, construction, equipment, et cetera, that will be tax-exempt on that. And also, one thing that surprised me when I look back on that, also offering Fufang a five-year abatement of income taxes. That surprised me. I didn't realize that it was essentially going to be an entirely tax-free entity. Grand Forks, another thing that surprised me that I read on the Economic Development page is that Grand Forks is a foreign trade zone, which indicates, and I don't understand this, and I'll probably ask more questions, but I'll just share what I read, merchandise considered, anything that comes into Grand Forks, the merchandise is considered outside U.S. Customs territory. And in quotes, which I read directly from the site, it indicates, "Foreign and domestic merchandise may be admitted into zones for designated operations without being subject to formal customs entry procedures." Products may not be subject to customs duties. And I'm not sure how that interacts with the Uyghur forced labor act, because when it says that it kind of avoids the, the issue of, of customs, I'm not sure where that falls in with border security. But, but know that Fufang has said, February 22nd of this year at a meeting, they did say that they would comply, and I know they're on hold right now. I say this for the future, but they did say that they would comply with that Uyghur forced labor protection act. Do expect that to be accomplished if Fufang continues. I would also like to request that that, that be asked of Cirrus Aircraft as well. Interesting thing on, and I'm not sure, I'll probably have to talk with Mr. Lund about this, I'm not sure how EDC sponsors work as far as having a sponsorship with the EDC, if there is, if that's like an investment of companies when people are sponsors of the EDC?
Membership.
A membership? So there's no financial interest for people that have sponsorship in that? Okay. That was one of my questions. Thank you. Questions on raw word, raw water versus freshwater, reading up a little bit on that you cannot use raw water on anything that is going to be made for either animal or human consumption. And also with the solid waste, my understanding is that that solid waste cannot go into a landfill. And my, and again, my understanding is that that is the plan for the solid waste, what I've heard thus far. The land sale, who initiated the land sale? I mean, do we know? I, did Fufang, I mean, there was no for sale signs.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson.
Thank you.
Okay. Craig Spicer.
Good evening.
Mr. Spicer, please.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Please, floor is yours.
Thank you. I came tonight with a little bit more information. I, I gave Mr. Phelan a protest that we gathered up 14 signatures of the North 81 Corridor that proposed to stop the pond movement, because we don't feel that it's right. I know they're voting on it tonight. We have, we have the Red River, which is just east of us, less than a quarter of a mile, a block from me. We have the Cooley for drainage. We have two main highway arteries that have ditches on both sides for drainage. We have the, the drainage ditch from the flood protection plan, that's just north, probably less than a quarter of a mile. That's, that's more than subsequent drainage for any storms or anything that could be produced. We also put a new pond in at the north end of 42nd Street. So, the thing behind this is that this, this pond is being brought in, not for us, but it's being brought in for Fufang. So we believe that with the drainage that we've had prior years, no one has ever had any problems, whether it's for future use or not. If it is, I don't think the people that are on the north corridor should be paying for it. I think it should be all blended in with future people. I would like the council, somebody on the council to make a motion to table the pond for now, until they gather more information. Couple other things on the annexation. We have another, another problem that a lot of people don't see, and that's with the, the oldest landmark farm in, in Grand Forks. And that farm has not been annexed. And why, we don't know. Is it a buffer? Is it gonna stay an island? Why, if the city was recommending that they annex at North End, why was that, not all of that property annexed in, instead of just the ones that are on the north side of the Corinthia Farm? So that's a question I have. I want, I want it to be known that there's quite a few acres out there that has not been annexed in. So why do they get off of this annexation and the rest of us are brought into the city? So those are the two things that I think should happen tonight. I believe that the mayor said in his interview that this project should come to a stop. Okay? Does that mean you're stopped, or does that mean Todd Phelan is the new mayor, and he decides to proceed with these infrastructures and this pond movement? If you decide to stop this project, I believe the project should be stopped in full, not just in part. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spicer.
Frank Matichuk.
Mr. Matichuk, please.
Yeah, good evening. I just wanna make two quick points. One thing I'd like to talk about, I've had a lot of education on Cephas lately, and looking over there, the way they do things, there are four main points that they ask for, and I won't bore you with all of them, but I'll read one and four, because I think they're important. Number one is a purchase, lease, or concession by any or to a foreign person of real estate located in proximity to any sensitive government facilities. Okay? Two and three talk about people being involved with the organizations and being on board of directors and have voting shares or whatever, and I won't bore you with that. Number four, though, says any other transaction, transfer, agreement, or arrangement designed to circumvent Cephas jurisdiction is not allowed. So I just wanted to make those two things clear. I'd also like to bring up one other quick point. I'm gonna try to make the record here and do it in two minutes, if I can. Anyway, I'd also like to bring up the point that your advisory committee, which was the Planning and Zoning Commission, had made a motion that if Fufang did not come, they didn't wanna do the annexation. If Fufang was developed, materialized, then they wanted to go ahead with the annexation. Now, I know you guys can overrule that, but I think you ought to take a look at what your own planning and zoning did. So with that, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Matichuk.
Dennis Cadlec.
Mr. Cadlec, please.
Thank you. Are you gonna answer any questions today?
The council can certainly answer questions if they so choose.
Well, I'd like to know if the council agrees with Mr. Sandy's opinion of Major Fox, Major Jerry Ming Fox. Does the council agree with Mr. Sandy's opinion of him? He's a decorated, highly-recognized, honored military man of this country. He helps protect our freedom, which China would like to have, because communism has no God and they have no freedom. So if you choose China, you're choosing a godless entity. And if you're not gonna answer my questions here, I suggest you write them down, because somebody will be coming along answering, asking the same questions we're asking tonight, and you will answer those, to those people. And, Mr. Mayor, I, I would think that you understand what that is. And, you know, are we paying for those videos? You know, those videos could have been much better done than they were, but you know, this stuff is going on all the time. And you know, if you take a look at that chess set and you go online and look at it, you'll find out where that comes from. And, and, and that you'd even be involved with that just amazes me, 'cause it's very obvious what the whole idea behind them is. But then when you're godless, you're godless. And when you're godless, you have not much knowledge, not much wisdom. You know, you might know a few things, but that's it. And that's the one thing I felt in here, every time I come in here, is the evil that emanates from this room. Talk about being scared, I'm shaking right now. You guys are the scariest people I know. You, you are willing to endanger this city, the people of this city, even this country and this nation. That flag stands for this republic. This is a republic. Please treat it as such. You know, the Bitcoin mining in this town is, is going fantastic. You know, you guys don't ever talk about that, but you guys must be approving it, because the biggest buildings are right behind your buildings. Like your water treatment plant, one of the biggest Bitcoin operations right there is right on the side of that. Tucked away very neatly, by the way. They have more security than our armory does. There's another Bitcoin mining operation that I went looked at, behind your city shop. That's another one. Really well-hidden by the shop in those streets. But you know, I started out believing there were three. Now I'm told there's six. And you know, the same person that sold you land that's housing materials for this Fufang development, I understand there's Bitcoin operating there also. And you know, the Bitcoin is losing so much money. This is why they had to double our gas and our electric prices, to help those people compensate. But they're borrowing monies from our bank that they're not gonna be able to pay back, and the banks are gonna collapse. And I want the people of this city to know that you people are behind this, that you know that this is going on. As a matter of fact, you're the ones that approved these Bitcoin operations here in town. How much tax are they paying? Are they paying their fair share? I'll bet you they're not paying the same amount for electricity the rest of us are. And you know, we've had more power failures in the last six months than we had in the last 30 years. How is that possible? But it's happening, and there's a lot of other things happening around here that you people wish to sweep under the table. And you know, it's only thanks to your stubbornness that I wind up finding these things out. Until I started coming to these meetings, I didn't know about half the stuff you people do. But now I can't keep up. I can research 20 hours a day and still never catch up to you guys. You're moving so fast, nobody can keep up, other than a branch of our federal government. And that's why they have them. They're called Cephas. And they'll do the job that we can't do, that you people are unwilling to do. And so I thank the Lord for that. And you don't know them evidently, because you guys are part of a godless society. You back communism. And communism, as I said earlier, has no God. They control. Our God allows us freedom, freedom of choice, and you people have made your choice. And remember this, when the day comes, and it's gonna be sooner here than you know, 'cause the good Lord's coming again. Thank the Lord. And the sooner, the better at the rate you people are making this world.
Thank you, Mr. Cadlec.
Diane Hooverson. Sorry, Diane Hooverson.
I'll take your time. We're working on that. That's, that's been an issue. Ms. Hooverson, please.
Thank you. It's great to be here. I grew up in Manville and then moved away for many, many, many years, moved to Washington, and then moved to Arizona. And now I'm back in Grafton. And I know, I, you probably think, what am I doing here? But you know, this project really is a part of the whole state of North Dakota. And when I was in South last April, August, so I can't even think of what I'm gonna do here. Last year in January, when I first started seeing all these things on the internet while I was out of, out of the area, and I just, it, it, I just couldn't believe what I was reading. It was just sickening to me. And so ever since then, I've been following everything that's been going on. And I want to personally thank the gentleman who started the petition. I know I can't say his name correctly, so I don't wanna, you know, do that wrongly. But he is a person that we should be very proud of, along with our senators, who I thought had the best line was, you know, let's move on. So, because I'm from Washington for many years, I am representing Costco, because I've written in the newspaper about Costco. And I went down to Fargo and talked with the general manager down there, and I said, we really need a Costco up in Grand Forks. And he asked me about all the things that were here already, and he said, well, we're gonna have a meeting and we're gonna be doing some long-term plans. So I went down there, talked to him this week, and he said, Grand Forks is in the top 50. They're gonna put 50 new Costcos in the Midwest. And, because we don't have one, and we're losing money. Our people that have put all their life into the hotels, into the food industries here, he said, my parking lot in Fargo is full of Canadians. And they're just bypassing Grand Forks. And you know, they've, I think they've only been there two and a half years. They've paid for everything. Their building is paid for. Everything is paid for. That's how much money they're making. They're putting another Costco in Fargo, because they're so busy. I was there on a Monday morning at 10:30. The parking lot was totally jammed, on a Monday morning at 10:30. They just can't keep up with all the people that wanna be, go to Costco. That would be the best thing that ever happened to Grand Forks. Would bring those people down from up north and get back to our community. I don't know anybody that wants to go shopping at a corn mill. And that's all I have to say. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michael Coachman.
Mr. Coachman, please, sir.
Hello, City Council. It's good to talk, to see you and everybody. I wanna thank Mr. Sanders and individuals who were emailing with me the last couple of days. Mr. Gossett, are you going to respond to my questions anytime soon?
I did. Check your email.
Was that recently? No, as far as the employees of Fufang?
Check, check your email, Mr. Coachman.
All right, thank you. So as I was saying, I was having a conversation with them, and some of the questions I was asking was, who was the individuals that was with, working with Mr. Gossett, and what law firms? The other question I had was, what law firm or firms and individuals were working with Fufang? And that was getting to kind of a, I guess, heated conversation with me and Mr. Sandy's here. So I was like, what is the problem? I'm just asking some questions, you know? How were people involved? Why was Mr. Quinn, the law firm? He was talking on different issues as far as the Constitution. So I'm asking these questions, and I get this response today. I was really kinda surprised. Says, "Mr. Coachman, I find your response and continued questions personal and certainly particular in nature. It is Mr. Gossett's responsibility to know who represent those with those who do contracts, not mine." I mean, I would still be involved in what was going on. It is my responsibility to make sure Mr. Gos, Gossett mitigate the city risk and get the best deal possible. I believe we both know our roles and are following through with our duties. Also, I was asking some other questions, and he goes, "I say particular in nature as you represent yourself as an educated person with regards to constitutional law. Yet you make statements and present them as facts." The facts I was asking is, what, when you say you don't want individuals to be on the agenda, I asked, what codes or what policies? Why? Not your personal opinion. That's what I was asking, which you did not get, come back with, which you come back with this. And to the contrary, I've been asking to email questions and only engage with it as rapid as possible. You are afforded five minutes during our meeting to express your opinion. To the contrary, Mr. Coachman, as you, in your opinions, represented as facts, was threatened to undermine our republic. Hmm. I deal in facts. You do? You haven't gave, I got sheets where you have not dealt with facts. You should attempt to do the same. I have. Matter of fact, I stand on this. Do you? I know I do. When it comes to facts, when it's finding out, the duties are, are picking out a attorney. Yes, I was on the city council, and we did look for other different law firms. Matter of fact, some of the people that were on our city council and lay a mark back in the day are now judges throughout the state, just to let you know. We just don't pick any judge, or any attorney to represent us. We do look at other attorneys. That's what I was asking. Why did you pick this? Why did you do this? And the question, and I, if you already sent it, I don't have it in this here, I asked for the names of the individuals that were working with you. The name of the individuals. Your response was, with the Fufang, I don't care. And I said, your personal opinion really doesn't matter. Yeah, I got it here, I know. Maybe it was a time you blacked out or something, I don't know. But I have it right here. So my question is, I am threatening republic. For some reason, that statement, when I read that, sounded like this guy just heard Thursday night on the TV. How am I threatening the republic? I'm asking questions, I'm standing on the Constitution. Everything I'm doing is based on why you're doing it. Now, if you don't like to be challenged, that's okay. But to say, I'm undermining republic, I don't think so. I bet you, and this was just asking me today, just today about 2:00 o'clock, I challenge you my passport against your passport at the next city council on who's been to more constitutional states. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coachman.
Sean Buchler.
Mr. Buchler, please.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me once, once again. Why should you listen to me? Good question. Why? I'd like to talk about my track record. I told you about the corn basis, you ignored me. I told you about Fufang. Pay attention to what they're not telling you. You continue to ignore me. That's coming back to bite you. I told you about Cephas. Mr. Sandy, you basically laughed in my face. So here we are today. We're Cephas is the reason why you're listening to us. So today, I have four things, basically. I'd like to talk about hearing versus listening, product-market fit, and a short Ronald Reagan modified story to make my point. So verse, hearing versus listening, I feel a lot of us, the people behind us, you heard us, but you didn't listen to us. You didn't follow up on our questions, didn't follow us in concern. And I think there's probably 100-plus questions that haven't been answered. And it wasn't to Cephas stepped in that now our questions have been answered. So that's a very positive thing. The other thing I'd like to talk about is, is a risk. One of the members of the audience asked me to pose this question. Are you still employing the DC law firm? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes. If so, has she made you aware of the possible consequences of continuing to do work related to this project? If the federal government decides to do so, they can undo all the aspects of this project, including annexation. The city will be responsible for all costs to remit these, any work done to this point. So not a question to be answered now. I'm sure a lot of us would be appreciative if that question was answered. Law firm will be later. Okay, moving, moving on, when I talk about product-market fit, I've gotta get my persuasion hat on, since I don't have Cephas on my business card to get you to listen to me. Us will appreciate the smile there. Anyway, last time we talked about U&amp;D, right? Grand Forks Air Force Base have an excellent fit in the community, two government agencies. I'd like to talk about your businesses I admire in this community, Waidell, Hugo's, Stratocorporation, Acme Tools, including Whitten and Chocolate's. So I actually have a gift for you, right? Product-market fit. Think about what those businesses represent. Honesty, integrity, homegrown, some of the best things in this community. Look how Fufang has engaged with you. Have they been honest? Have they been transparent? Have they looked out for the best interests of the community? Pretty straightforward. Would any of those businesses involved with Fufang, would they choose to put a corn wet mill inside of the city? mill inside of the city limits? I think the answer would be a resounding no. It doesn't belong in the community of Grand Forks, doesn't belong in North Dakota, doesn't belong in the United States. One individual that I have an ask of you, Mr. Mayor, regarding, and there's an individual that spoke here on February 7th. His first name was Ray. He's an American. He's served his country. He got his citizenship, by the way. I don't know if you remember him. He happens to be from China, him and his mother. He gave a very touching story about, and moved me. I listened to it a number of times. There's one individual that spoke here I think you can all learn from, would be to spend some time with him. My ask is, I'll leave a check, not a check, $20 bill for you, simply to have lunch with him, Mr. Mayor, if that would be acceptable to you?
Yeah, you can't pay for it though, Mr. Bouclair. We'll figure it out.
Clarify, this is for him? For his lunch, you're a successful businessperson, right? Would that be acceptable to buy, you can pay for his lunch?
Yeah, I think-
I'll pay for his lunch.
I think he lives right next to Councilmember Cavami, so they know each other well. So I'm sure we could work something out.
All right. Fantastic. Final comment about the Ronald Reagan modified story. Ronald Reagan told a story one time about two ethnic groups, a bird in a fight. The birds were chickens, right? Roosters, it's called a cockfight, right? When two roosters fix, think of Miss Marshall Arche. So the story goes, how do you identify the Grand Forks Council, Grand Forks City, and at the cockfight? They're the one with the duck, right? How do you know Fu Feng is present? They're the one bedding on the duck. How do you know the Chinese Communist Party is present? The duck wins, right? It doesn't belong here. Thankfully for us, now you're still holding a duck, Mr. Phelan, but no longer you're taking a duck to a cockfight. You're taking a duck to fight with a gun. And the guns will be CFIUS, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bouclair.
That's all the comments I have.
All right. Appreciate everybody's comments this evening. Moving on to three awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
3.1 is the National Assisted Living Week, September 11th through 17th, 2022.
Thank you. Whereas the number of elderly and disabled Americans is dramatically increasing, and whereas assisted living is a long-term care service that fosters choice, independence, and autonomy to our elderly nationwide, and whereas the National Center for Assisted Living proudly created National Assisted Living Week, and whereas the theme of National Assisted Living Week 2022 Joyful Moments highlights the opportunity to bestow on our residents a multitude of events and activities that show them how much we care for and love them. Now, therefore, I, Brandon Bochensky, the mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, proclaim the week of September 11th, the 17th, 2022, as National Assisted Living Week in Grand Forks, North Dakota. I urge all citizens to visit friends and loved ones who reside at these facilities, and also to learn more about the assisted living services and how they benefit our community.
3.2 is the Fu Feng Due Diligence Update.
You got this, Mr. Phelan, please.
Mayor Bochensky and members of City Council, this evening, we have a few updates we're going to provide to you. Mr. Gossett and Mr. Kimball from the Cooley Law Firm, they're going to give you a couple of legal updates. I'm going to give an infrastructure update from our last meeting in the hall. I also have Eric Shooter Ashes here this evening too, and he's going to provide you an update regarding Fu Feng USA. And then finally, the mayor, Bochensky, has followed up from our last raw water supply update. And we've asked Mr. Bierian to be here, from Bierian and Associates, to give you an update on some of the raw water supply because that's kind of an ongoing concern that people bring up. So with that, I'd hand it back over to Mr. Gossett, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, since our last meeting, Judge Foudy issued a decision in the petition ballot case, the mandamus case, the remaining decision, the remaining case that was outstanding. Just want to give an update. There, as you know, there were two cases that were started. One was an appeal, appeal of a local governing body decision, the appeal of Mr. Stand's decision. That case had been dismissed back in August 11th because there was no statute or ordinance that allowed for the appeal. And because of that fact, there was no jurisdiction for the court to hear that particular case. Judgment has been entered, dismissed in the case, and the notice of entry of judgment was served back on August 15th, which starts the appeal period for that particular case. With respect to the mandamus case, again, it was the same matter with respect to the petition to put it to a citywide vote. As you know, there's a hearing on August 18th of 2020. Judge Foudy issued his decision on August 26th of 2022. What that did is it denied the petitioners' request of relief to mandate a vote and for an injunction, and granted the city's motion for summary judgment that in turn resulted in the dismissal of the action. On September 1st, judgment was entered dismissing all of the petitioner's claims with prejudice, and noticementary judgment was served on that date as well, which again starts the appeal period for that particular action. I'll just briefly go through the decision that was issued last week by Judge Foudy. What he did is, if you recall, there were five reasons set forth in Mr. Stand's decision to deny the petition as being not sufficient to put it to a citywide vote. What the court did is it went through each and every one of those bases that were set forth in Ms. Stand's. The first was that the matter wasn't referable because it was an administrative decision. The court determined that that was not a proper basis to find that the petition was insufficient, citing to a North Dakota Supreme Court case. I couched that in terms of, the court also went through later on, and we'll talk about it, that the contract clause in both the U.S. and North Dakota constitutions became a legal barrier to refer contracts. So it's a little bit part and parcel, but that administrative matter was found not to be a proper basis. But as we'll talk about with respect to the contract clause, that is a legal barrier to referring contracts. The second reason that was set forth was there was an inclusion of two or more distinct and unrelated questions in the petition. The court found that that was, in fact, a proper basis to find the petition was insufficient. In the filings by the petitioners in the case, they contended that both the development agreement and the task orders were to be voted on. The court noted that the development agreement was an entirely separate contract, separate from the task order contracts. In fact, the court noted that the development agreement was, there was a motion for that, and then a separate motion for the task order agreements. And the court said the task orders are distinguishable from the development agreement because some task orders dealt with studies, some for design, some for what the court described as dissimilar infrastructure items. And because of that fact, that both items were being, as the petitioners noted in their briefing in the case, that both the development agreement and the task orders are to be voted on, now you're asking the voters to vote on two distinct questions. And therefore, the court concluded that that was a proper basis to determine that the petition was insufficient. The next was, the basis was that there was inclusion of extraneous materials within the petition. This was an alternative argument in that if the development agreement and the task orders weren't being asked to be voted on, then, and it was only the development agreement, then information about the task orders within the petition was extraneous. And that was a basis for denying or finding that the petition was insufficient. Given the fact that the court had previously, and we just talked about, that the task orders and the development agreement were both being asked to be discussed, it almost became mooted in that it's no longer extraneous because the task orders were within the petition. The next basis the court went through, or Ms. Stand indicated in her memo, was that there was a failure to include the full text of the matter being referred. The court found that that was a proper basis to find the petition was insufficient. The court noted that none of the agreements were attached. The court also said that the admissions, those admissions resulted in confusion. In fact, the court even noted that it was unclear, looking at the language on the petition, as to whether it was intended to impact the task orders as well. The court also noted that the voters, those that signed, had to rely upon representations of the petitioners. And those that were signing the petition may have thought a vote would stop the Fu Feng project. And the court also noted that both parties concurred that whether there is a vote up or down with the development agreement would not definitely result in the stopping of the Fu Feng project. Finally, the last reason for the finding of the petition being insufficient was that there was an omission of the names and affidavits on every single signature page. The court found that that was not a proper basis to find the petition insufficient, stating that it was clear who was circulating the petition. The significant ruling also talked about, or the significant part of this decision was the contract clause. Under the U.S. and North Dakota constitutions, laws can't be enacted that would impair existing contract obligations. Those constitutional provisions became legal barriers to the petition, the vote. And this is the reason why, is that when you refer a matter through this voting process, the people through the vote are really acting as a legislature in that regard. And since the legislature can't act to violate a constitutional provision, neither can the people through a vote violate or cause a violation of the Constitution. The court noted that the Home Rule Charter can't be used as a shield to, as a shield from an unconstitutional act. And in effect, the petitioners were arguing that if the development agreement was voted down, it would effectively wipe the agreements away, as if they never existed. And the court said that that impaired the contracts by simply causing it to be wiped away under the development agreement. And the court noted that it really becomes a futile act in that if you put this to a vote and it's unconstitutional, it can't be implemented. Likewise, if you put it to a vote and the development agreement is voted up or in favor, all they're doing is reaffirming what the city council has already done. So you're, under both scenarios, it becomes a futile act. And so at the end of the day, the court ruled in favor of the city in both of the cases with respect to the petition. The only other case that's outstanding right now is Cadillac brought in a case seeking to have a restraining order issued with respect to the annexation of the property that was done. The theory is, Mr. Cadillac owns underneath Highway 81. He should have been provided notice. The briefing's already been done. I believe if you do the math, I don't even think if you added Mr. Cadillac's property, it wouldn't change the numeric as far as the 25% criteria. But there is a hearing on October 3rd of 2022 in front of Judge Hager on the motion for a restraining order. So with that, I'll answer any questions with respect to the pending cases.
Any questions for Mr. Gossett? All right, seeing none, please continue, Mr. Phelan.
Mr. Gossett, I think we have Mr. Kimball. Looks like he's online, and I think he was going to provide the next briefing on the CFIUS matter.
Yes. And just for introductory purposes, Chris Kimball is with the Cooley Law Firm. He's here presenting because Ms. Reinkins is on maternity leave, and Mr. Kimball is actually Ms. Reinkins' superior partner in the Cooley Law Firm. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Kimball as to discuss the recent letter that was issued by CFIUS that was provided or dated August 31st of 2022.
Okay, this is crispy. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Want to talk briefly about the August 31 letter and then give the council and the mayor a chance to ask me questions. This is basically a process letter. Right, it comes from CFIUS, the Committee on Foreign Investment in the United States, which is charged with reviewing the national security implications of certain transactions. And while this letter is full of regulatory citations and legalese, what it basically says is that the committee, CFIUS, would like more time and more information to consider the cornmill project. Now, for a little bit of context, Fu Feng voluntarily notified CFIUS of the proposed project and was seeking clearance, right, permission from the government to proceed, or at least a determination as to whether CFIUS had the authority to review the transaction. Now, the initial review process of that voluntary filing has concluded, right? The government has 30 days to review the filing, which is called the declaration. With that process concluded, the government has a couple of options. They can approve the transaction. They can either approve it or ask for more information, or they can do what they've done here, which is actually quite common, and that's to ask the parties, Fu Feng, to provide additional information in the form of what we call a notice. And a notice is just a regulatory term for a more comprehensive and more detailed filing, right? More information about Fu Feng, more information about their owners, folks who make decisions, the project generally. Now, the process for reviewing a notice is very similar to the process for reviewing the initial filing, which is called the declaration. One difference, however, is that the review period is a little bit longer, right? So instead of 30 days, the government would have 40 days and then potentially another 45 days. So what we have here, in short, is a letter to Fu Feng's lawyers, right, Law Firm Lock Lord in Washington, saying basically, thank you for the additional information. We'd like more. And they're asking Fu Feng's lawyers, do you intend to provide more information to us? Do you intend to go through this process and extend the review? Now, Fu Feng can decide to continue to cooperate, to go through this process further, or they can decide, no, we're not interested in doing that. Thank you very much. If the answer is the latter, we're not interested in providing more information, CFIUS has some authority to initiate that process on its own, although they won't have the benefit of the cooperation of the parties. So my expectation, based on communications with Fu Feng's lawyers, is that they do intend to cooperate and submit another filing. I don't know that that's the final decision, but that's, to the best of my knowledge, where we'll end up based on statements that they've made about their interest in continuing to cooperate. So if that is in fact the plan on Fu Feng's part, my expectation is that they would signal, right, respond to this letter and say, yes, we intend to submit a notice, right, a more comprehensive filing. And, excuse me, typically, that process involves a little bit of work on Fu Feng's part. I would expect that it would take them maybe a matter of a couple of weeks to gather all of the relevant information. And then they would be submitting that information to the government, who would accept it and start a regulatory clock, so to speak. So if that is in fact the path, my expectation is that this review process by CFIUS would last, let's say, between 75 days and a matter of months. So big picture, government is interested in the transaction. The government is interested in learning more about it. And if Fu Feng is inclined to cooperate further, we're probably looking at a review process lasting a number of months. Let me pause there and see if there are questions based on that.
Any questions from council? No, please continue, Mr. Kimball.
So, taking another step back, when we first talked to the city about this issue, the city's, one of the city's questions was, well, does CFIUS really have authority to look at this transaction? And one of the gentleman's comments this evening focused on two strands of the government's authority, the government's jurisdiction to look at these transactions. One, he noted, was with respect to leases of real property and their proximity to facilities of interest, right, monetary bases, Grand Forks Air Force Base. And he also mentioned- And he also mentioned transactions that were intended or designed to circumvent the government's jurisdiction. The other the other basis of CFIUS's authority to review transactions is is when you have a transaction involving a foreign person acquiring a U.S. business. So one of the questions out of the gate that the city asked was, is this project something that CFIUS really has authority to look at? And our view on that is probably no, and I can get into the rationale for that if that's of interest to the council. I know that you may have seen our memorandum on the issue, but I'm happy to recap that now if that's helpful to this discussion.
Yeah, please.
Okay, so we have Foo Fang, right, foreign person, acquiring real property in Grand Forks. Real property without any improvements upon it is not a U.S. business, right? So if we're thinking about the the authority of the government, the authority of CFIUS to review a transaction involving a foreign person, Foo Fang, we think that it's not likely that the government would conclude that Foo Fang has acquired a U.S. business here, they've acquired real property, they have an acquired property, a building on it that has improvements on it. So our view is that there's probably not a legal basis for CFIUS to conclude that Foo Fang acquired a business. And if that's the case, CFIUS would not have authority to review the project on that basis. Going back to the issue of leases of land and proximity to sensitive facilities, the way that the CFIUS regulations are written focuses on leases of real property in certain specific proximity to certain specific facilities. And when we look at the distance between the proposed project and, say, Grand Forks Air Force Base and other facilities that are actually enumerated in the regulations, we find that there really isn't a matchup between a particular facility that's listed in the regulations and the location of the plant for purposes of establishing the government's authority to look at the project under that aspect of the government's jurisdiction. So our sense, right, Cooley's sense, my sense as a CFIUS practitioner, is that CFIUS is interested in looking at this and would like to develop more facts, would like to understand more about Foo Fang and the project, but I suspect that at the end of the day, the government lawyers will determine that they don't have authority to review the transaction formally, and that therefore they may not have authority to block the project from proceeding. Now, there may be facts that the government is is seeking to develop that could influence our decision, but based on the facts as we understand them, our expectation is that the government will decide, CFIUS will decide, that it doesn't have authority at the end of the day to review the transaction and to address the perceived national security concerns with it.
So number four, intend to circumvent the regulations. How would that apply? That was one of the questions.
Yeah, that's a that's a great question. I don't I don't see, I'm not aware of facts that would suggest that the that the transaction was structured in a way to circumvent the jurisdiction of the committee. When when we see circumvention type situations, we're talking about, you know, standing at the dummy U.S. corporation, right, to make an acquisition, so it doesn't look like there's a foreign person. There's something underhanded about it. And here, my my guess, right, my sense of how the government would look at this is that there is an open, I call transparent in certain ways, acquisition of real property without subterfuge as to the acquisition. So I don't see that the facts that would suggest that the government could avail itself of the circumvention theory. Again, the government looking at this, the committee may have information that is not available to us, but that's my rate of the facts as I understand them.
Okay, I guess I got one more question, and I'll open it up to council for more. So if CFIUS does go through this process and finds jurisdiction and unwinds the the project or unwinds the land sale, what is the next step? Are they have recourse beyond making the company sell the land? Or what would their recourse be at that point? And we were to have the ability to unwind local governing bodies' actions when it relates to annexation or other items?
So if we assume that CFIUS concludes that it has jurisdiction to review the project, the the committee would have authority to do what it needed to do to address its perceived national security concern. So in this case, right, one of the concerns is espionage, right, signals, intelligence collection, things like that. The government would have broad authority to prohibit the transaction from proceeding. It could, for example, require Foo Fang to sell the property. It wouldn't require the sellers to give the money back, but it could require Foo Fang to sell the real property on a schedule. It could also do other things that it felt necessary to mitigate the national security issue. So the simplest ways to resolve the issues may be, in the government's mind, simply requiring the sale to be unwound, in which case there would be nothing for the city to really do with respect to the development.
Any questions? You you concluded, Mr. Kimball, your comments. Do you want to you open up to some questions from council?
I'm happy to take questions, yes.
All right. President Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Appreciate you standing in tonight. I'm wondering if you could discuss CFIUS and their mission. I is is CFIUS, is the mission of CFIUS purely for the economic development of the country? Or is their mission to find jurisdiction related to national security issues?
Sure, let me let me see if I can get my camera on. That's helpful. So the the mission of the committee is to address national security issues really narrowly. The government operates, the US government operates under an open investment policy, but CFIUS is not concerned with economic development in one way or the other. So the way that the committee looks at this issue is solely through a national security lens.
So so as a follow up, they're 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 attempting, they're actually trying to find jurisdiction. They're working hard to try to find jurisdiction so that they can make sure to cover the national security interests of our country. Is that a correct statement?
I would say that in any manner that's brought CFIUS's attention through a filing of the type that Foo Fang did, the lawyers at the Treasury Department, which is the chair of the committee, will make a determination as to whether they have jurisdiction to review it. Now, obviously, people in government will have an opinion, preliminary opinion, about potential national security issues, and will hope that the government will find jurisdiction. But but the inquiry is initially focused on jurisdiction. If there is jurisdiction, they'll pursue and develop the facts relevant to the national security issues. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball.
All right, any further questions from council? Mr. Vean, please.
Just while the question, even if they don't have jurisdiction, could we still request that they do an inquiry?
Well, no, not not formally and not in a way that would result in litigation of perceived issues. The government, CFIUS, can only act to address security issues if it has jurisdiction. So I think that the short answer is no there. They don't have authority to do anything about the transaction if we don't first establish jurisdiction.
All right, any further comments? Well, thank you for your time, Mr. Kimball. I'm sure we'll have some follow up with you in the near future. So thank you.
Thank you for the invitation.
Mr. Phelan, please.
Yeah, Mayor Bocinski, I'm I'm going to be joined by Mr. Shuder Ash from Foo Fong USA. So we're going to, next item, we're going to talk about the Foo Fong slash Highway 81 annexation area. And Mayor, we briefed this at the committee hall, and I just want to provide some updates from when we last spoke regarding our our request to moving forward. Cheryl, there we go. Thank you. The mayor discussed earlier, you know, we did get the CFIUS letter, and that we were we're going to pause on some of the construction activities specifically related to Foo Fong. And when I was here a couple of weeks ago, we were looking at the various aspects of what really relates to Foo Fong in particular and the industrial area. And I just want to point out those areas when we talk about construction. Construction related to Foo Fong are these improvements that we have proposed along Highway 2 in these locations and 81 to include along 27. So as I as I discussed, we have had meetings with the North Dakota DOT, and they have committed that they would help support if on design and also capital improvements from a funding particular on these three areas, knowing that they are state highways. We're going to work through the particulars, but as you recall, as part of the traffic study, Foo Fong drove these improvements, and they were generally turn lanes where they're in these in these intersections. So those would be physical improvements. If the Foo Fong project did not move forward, we would not ask the North Dakota DOT to move forward with those improvements because those improvements specifically related to the Foo Fong plant itself, we would ask at some point next year, if we did get a a note where the Foo Fong project is not going to move forward, we would let the DOT know, please don't bid those projects next spring for next summer's construction because we don't need those particular improvements at this point in time. The other projects that we're working on currently with that relate specifically to Foo Fong is the the intake, which is down by the the forks of the river here, the Red River and the Red Lake River. And that's when we talked about some additional pumps in this pump station and some ancillary improvements. Number two is a pump station out by our our new water treatment plant, and then these two dual lines that would go to not only to Foo Fong, but this agribusiness park area. And so those are, that's another project we're working with the state of North Dakota. In this case, we're working with the North Dakota Department of Water Resources and currently, right now, under a design agreement, they're they're funding up to 60% of that design for the raw water. The other thing that relates to Foo Fong is this industrial pump station, which is located right here, and and that's to serve Foo Fong. And then there's a forest main that goes out to our wastewater treatment plant. And when Mr. Bergen from WFW was here last week, this industrial wastewater pump station will initially serve the Foo Fong site, but will also serve other industries in our area, the noted Corinta area that's currently under an annexation agreement. We we would think within within some time period, that's going to become additional agribusiness. It would be able to serve that area, this industrial pump station, and then JR Simplot, Red River Biorefiner are down in this area. So that would be a size to a point where it would also serve these other adjacent industries in that area. The other thing is that the wastewater treatment plant, as you noted, that we are looking at certain capacities. That's another citywide project, but there is some scale. We may not build it to a certain size if Foo Fong project doesn't move forward. We are going to make some improvements, we are going to make some expansions, but we may not make as many of them if Foo Fong doesn't move forward. So as part of this, when we briefed this last time, and we talked about specifically construction, when we we were working as a city administrative team and with Mayor Bocinski, we were looking at how 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 prudently would it be to move forward with construction in anticipation of it was going to be a challenge to start fall construction, in anticipation of that we were probably going to get a notice from CFIUS that there'd be some further information required, some further uncertainty, that it would make sense to move forward with bid dates and construction to the spring of next year. So as you look at these various projects, whether it's the raw water facilities, we have bid dates and proposed summer construction of '23. So those bid, those would be bid in in March of 2023. And so we would continue through design, but no construction on those particular projects. The other projects I think that we're going to have to have some discussion on are relate to the wastewater treatment plant, and you can see where we do have some earlier construction dates yet this fall. And some of it relates to the deep foundation and structures package. And so some of those are, what does that package look like? Do we need to build that all out? Those are some things that we're going to have to consider as part of the design and would want to engage with the city council as part of that. That's a to be determined. Again, when you look at down here, number six, raw water in the industrial forest main and this sanitary lift station 50, which is that industrial pump station, those are all scheduled for bidding in March of 2023. So we would, we're not going to be in construction on those projects. I would say the one note we're going to come back to in the wastewater treatment plant, we need to move forward, but maybe the scale of that we may have to may have to consider. And then as you go down, the future task orders that we have not brought forward to you, you can see that all of those are really further off into '23 and into '24. Some of that relates to the raw water. It relates to the industrial forest main that would relate more specifically to Foo Fong as we move forward. This evening has been a discussion is what we're asking for, and Mr. Mr., I have asked Mr. Shuder Ash to come here and not only give a give an update regarding the Foo Fong project, we get, we've been giving you a lot of updates on the support infrastructure before Mr. Shuder Ash to give an update on where they're at with design and and construction activities. I just want to point out that Mr. Shuder Ash has asked the city of Grand Forks to continue on with planning and design work for for the wastewater treatment plant, for the the industrial pump station, for the raw water, and not construction, but for for the design and planning of those. They do know, and Mr. Shuder Ash will confirm this, they do know that they are at some risk, they do have a $5 million letter of credit. And so certainly, if we go through design and we don't get to bidding in construction for whatever reason, we will have, they will have spent significant sums, they will have put at jeopardy their $5 million letter of credit because we will have continued to work on those particular projects as part of that. We did engage with Foo Fong USA because we just don't, we wanted to make them aware of that, but currently, right now, you know, we certainly got a briefing from our law firm. I suspect they're getting briefings from their law firm. They feel comfortable moving forward and putting their letter of credit at risk and because and continue to move forward with the the design of these various projects. I think the city of Grand Forks, we're going to be enlightened too if we go through the design process to so that we can discover if there's any concerns or issues we have, whether that's with the industrial pump station, whether that's with the raw water supply line, whether it's with the sanitary sewer systems that we're working on. So a lot of those projects certainly relate to Foo Fong, but it also relates to industrial development in that area, and I think it's going to be really important for us to discover if there aren't any flaws in our thinking as we work through the various designs and studies. So we are encouraging you to continue to move forward. And as noted on tonight's agenda, you have item 5.7, 5.8, related to the wastewater treatment plant. We are asking you to continue to move forward with those design works and refining those projects. 5.9 on the agenda is related to the water main, and that is more related to the annexation area. Item 5.10, Mr. Spicer was up there talking of the stormwater pond. And again, that relates to the entire annexation area to include Foo Fong. And then there's under 5.11, there's A, B, C, and D, and those relate to the task orders. 511A relates to that industrial pump station number 50 that I spoke of in Forest Main. Again, we're, that's primarily going to serve Foo Fong, but it's also longer term going to serve that larger industrial area. We are asking you to continue to move forward with design on those. 511B is that water main, and again, that's to to fulfill the entire annexation area. Item C is the raw water supply. Again, you've already approved under the raw water supply, you've approved us moving forward with the intake improvements, you've approved us moving forward with design on the pump station, and this would be more for the raw water lines. Again, we're we're asking you to continue to move forward so that we can continue in the design process in that. And then finally, the sanitary sewer forest main related to lift station 50. Again, that's related to that industrial pump station. We're asking you for us to continue with the design so that we can really hone in and make sure there are no no flaws in in how we're moving forward. Mr. Spicer early brought up, and I think he has stated that, you know, we don't want a and we don't need a a, and we don't need a stormwater pond. And so as we move forward with additional developments, we did say that we would move forward with this annexation area. There are entities like SNS that would like to grow and expand and they need that stormwater pond to develop. As you recall, the city council did say that if Fu Fang moves forward, there would be no assessments other than to Fu Fang. If Fu Fang project doesn't move forward, there would be adjacent assessments regarding the stormwater pond. That's how the city council approved those. I just want to highlight also on the wastewater collection system, this city council did approve it with 0% special assessments to the adjacent property owners. Regarding the water main that we are going to ask, the state of North Dakota pays 60% of that, that also will have no special assessment to the adjacent annexation area. So there's a lot of the utilities. I would say, you know, the stormwater pond is needed long-term, not only for Fu Fang, but the adjacent area. But if Fu Fang project moves forward, USA project moves forward, there will be no assessments to the adjacent property owners as we move forward. Again, time will tell regarding these specific questions. And maybe mayor, I'll put a period on there and I'll ask Mr. Shooter Ash, Cheryl, if we could, so we can see the people take down the presentation. And then I would ask here to give us an updating and give us some of his sense of wanting us to continue on on the design process. Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Phil and the city council. Just a brief update, you know, as Mr. Phil has shared at previous council meetings, we've been having a bi-weekly project team meeting with the city to keep them updated. As far as the, where we're at in the process, we're currently doing the master and the site planning work, you know, as required with the city processes as part of that. We've done a number of the site testing, so the topographic testing, our surveys, the geotech testing. We're also currently giving out a package for later on area access roads in preparation for construction in the spring. Air program is progressing. We have, we have that back from HTR. We're just going through the internal review verification of it and then we'll share with the city and get ready for the submittal, continue with the basic engineering package and starting to engage with the equipment suppliers. Also, as Todd mentioned, we have asked that the work order still progress as, you know, the project timeline, I think for both of us, the city and ourselves, we're looking at that spring timeline to really start construction. And there's a number of steps in preparation of that, and that can be done really in parallel with that prep work, the design work, private construction while we continue to look through the CFIUS process and cooperate with them on that matter.
Mayor Bocinski, that's what we have for an update on the infrastructure component part. If there's any questions on that. And then finally, we'd ask Mr. Bierin to give us some updates on raw water supply if there's no further questions on that presentation.
Well, does anyone have any question for Mr. Shooter? I guess my first question would be on the CFIUS. Are you guys planning to cooperate and continue with a further, deeper dive, deeper review from them? That was what Mr. Kimball had mentioned earlier. Is that your plan to go forward with that?
Yeah, we're currently engaged with CFIUS. Our council's been, they connected with them Friday, today. So we're talking to them with, you know, really just determining, you know, next steps and how to, you know, properly, you know, I guess, address the concerns that were, or I guess next steps that were outlined in the letter received last week.
Mr. Kimball did mention, you know, this could be 90 days, it could be months depending upon that. I mean, if that is the case, you do realize that construction may be, continue to be paused until we can get that answer back from CFIUS. So even if the design work happens, these timelines that we've got now may be extended further. You guys understand that?
Yeah, I understand that.
Anybody got any other questions for Mr. Shooter Ash?
Mayor, just so I'm clear, the lawyers are talking, but is there a clear direction that we will or won't continue?
Yeah, I guess, just for a clear answer there, Mr. Shooter Ash, do you intend to follow up and respond to the letter that you're going to cooperate, give more information? I mean, can you give us that commitment or are you, I guess more clarity on that would help?
Yeah, we're still getting information from CFIUS on what was outlined in that letter. So I can't give a definitive answer until we get more information from CFIUS as we, as we talk to them about it this, you know, this week. I mean, we have to respond here in, you know, the next couple of days and we intend to do so, but we also need to, you know, understand what was outlined in the letter and to make sure that we proceed in a manner that, you know, they expect.
And then you can, I guess, continue to share that information if that's as you go forward, as your decision's made, share that and we can disseminate that to the council and the public.
Absolutely. As soon as we, you know, make any steps, we'll be sharing that with the city and the council.
I have one, just one other question for Mr. Phil.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Shooter Ash, ladies and gentlemen? Ms. Losowski, please.
It would be great if you would grace us with your presence here at some of these meetings, sir.
Any response, Mr. Shooter Ash? She asked if you could come to some of the meetings if you could make that work. People would appreciate it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I'm planning to join the meetings. I mean, as you're aware, in the city council, you know, I have participated in several of the meetings and, you know, through the winter, the spring, and through this process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shooter. Any further questions for him? All right, moving back to Mr. Phil, I know Mr. Veen had a question for you, so.
Yeah, Mr. Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Shooter Ash.
I understand the storm holding ponds, like you explained it, and that they would be required with the annexation. Will there be some potential modifications, whatever needed, if Fu Fang didn't come because the size of the pond would be for the entire development, or does that happen regardless?
Mayor Bocinski and members of city council, you know, we talked about this and what I've been told is, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Grasser, I think you're back there, aren't you? Mr. Grasser, he recommended that regardless if Fu Fang would come or not, he recommended that we should do the entire pond was his recommendation regarding the size. You know, I talked about the size of the wastewater treatment plant, maybe that we could, but Mr. Grasser thought it would be best to bill it all and I'll have him explain the reasons why on that.
Good evening, Mayor. And Kenveen, basically the area that we annexed, if you look at the area that's serving the pond, roughly half of the area that's going into the pond is the Fu Fang property. The other half is, are the businesses along Highway 81, but also including all the right-of-way that goes along with 81 Mill Road, 30th Avenue, 33rd Avenue, those various, those right-of-ways probably make up another, I'm gonna say 20 or 25%, you know, the total contributing area. So when you're in there building a pond, efficiency of size and operation kind of dictate that you, you know, you do as much as you can while you're there. Once you build a pond, if you have to come back and try to expand it while it's got water in it while it's operating, much more expensive to try to come back and build that out in phases. So that's basically the reason we're looking at, you know, you're gonna be building out three-quarters of the pond, you know, for the Fu Fang site in the 81 right-of-way.
One default, is there an issue also with timing of the year for building the pond?
Yeah, the pond is, we found that, you know, in our country, we can get very, very wet periods of time, we can get very dry periods of time. We get these wet periods of time with a pond, you're digging a big hole in the ground, basically. So if you do that during the, when the groundwater is high, when it's raining, it's very much more difficult to get that built just because you're working in the mud all the time. We found over time, because we've built lots and lots of ponds all over town over the last number of years, as you, these are required to meet our stormwater discharge requirements. It's a federal requirement passed to the state, passed down to us. So that's the reason we've done a lot of them. And pardon my digression, but I'll get back to the original question. So we found that the most efficient way of building the pond is to bid them out basically during the winter months, early winter months. And the reason for that is, is the ground is starting to freeze, so the ground gets stiff, it starts to freeze, you can actually run your equipment then on top of that, you know, the frost and the frozen ground and not get bogged down in the mud. Your groundwater tables are lower, you're not getting rain. So again, it's, we found it's really more efficient. You can't control your construction schedule very, very well if you're building them in the summertime because mother nature's just gonna dictate, you know, what you're able to do.
President Sandy.
Mr. Grasser, just a quick follow-up. As just not necessarily city policy, but more as a general rule, we have been going to larger, more regional ponds rather than more smaller ponds purely for maintenance and economies of scale, correct?
Correct. Again, you know, concentrating on one larger pond is easier than if you break that up into, you know, five, six, eight, 10.
So this isn't that, this isn't an abnormal pond that we're talking about building.
No, we encourage larger-sized ponds. Our policies, our cost-share policies, we pay a higher share on larger ponds than we do on smaller ponds. So we actually encourage a larger regional concept when we build the ponds.
Thank you.
Anything further? All right, thank you, Mr. Grasser.
Mayor Bocinski, before I ask Mr. Bierin to come up, also wanted to highlight, and I forgot, is that we did have a state funding meeting last week with the various state agencies that touch water-related programs and had a very good virtual meeting. We're intending to have an in-person meeting later in September. And another reason to keep moving forward with design is that the state of North Dakota is going to receive various federal funds. And so we're working with them on the various categories, whether it's with the State Water Commission or Department of Environmental Quality, or the Bank of North Dakota, or Public Finance Authority. Anyway, the state has this one-stop shop, and so we're working through all the various infrastructure components related to water. And that, when we say water, drinking water, raw water, wastewater, stormwater, we're trying to find the best programs for us to meet the requirements. And so we had a good initial meeting last week. And I think as we work through the fall, the state's gonna know more and more of the rules and how we can fit into the various categories. So we did have a good initial meeting and with city staff, our consultants, and with the various state agencies. And they're certainly willing to help us and support us. And so more to come as we work through the design and all the various funding categories with that, too. Next, we did attach Mayor Bocinski, as the last time Mr. Bierin was here talking about raw water, the mayor asked Mr. Bierin to follow up with some questions that he had in the event of trying to be as transparent as possible and share the information that we have. We asked Mr. Bierin if he could kind of update us on the raw water supply that's come up from time to time. So thanks, Steve.
Thanks. Hi, Mayor Bocinski, President Sandy, members of council, Steve Bierin with Bierin Associates. I've been before you several times to talk about water supply for the city of Grand Forks as it relates to the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. And in talking to Mayor Bocinski, although we went through a lot of detailed assumptions and a lot of detailed models, sometimes the results from that aren't as intuitive as one would hope. And so the mayor had a very specific question for me. He asked that if you look at the period from January 1st to 1951, so that would be the period after which Baldville Dam was built, which is the dam at Valley City, which is your last recourse of water right now prior to the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, and looking to the present, which is about 70, 71 years or 26,000 days, he wanted to know how many times the flow in the river reached 204 CFS, how many days? And that 204, the significance of that is that would be the time where the 10 CFS for the Fu Fang project ends up being 5% of the demand. And so to specifically look at the mayor's question, there would have been 194 days in that 71-year period, or 0.74% of the time when there would only have been, if you look at the Fu Fang demands, you'd still have 95% of the river available for other uses or else flow in the river. Being engineers, we did give him a table from 1% up to 10% so he could look at a variety of data. And then we also felt it would be important to understand how frequent that 204 CFS might occur. And over that 71-year period or those 26,000 days approximately, it was less than the oneth percentile or the first percentile. And so you'd have less than 1 in 100 chance for that to take place over that 71-year period.
I'd be glad to answer any questions on that as well as any questions you might have on previous discussions.
They have that chart, is that chart, can that be brought up or is it, I don't know where you guys are on?
So the specific question that you asked was at the top, Mayor Bocinski, and that addresses that. And then you can see that this is the table of various percentiles from where what percent Fu Fang represented the flow in the river. Would Fu Fang ever represent 10% over that 71-year period? There's a zero times that would ever do that. How many times would it represent 1%? There, the frequency jumps up to 1,000 days over that, or 5, 6,000 days over that course of record. And as I was describing earlier, when you look at that 204 CFS that you asked about, you could see at the bottom of this graphic, this table, that that's lower than the first percentile of the data over that 71-year period. Maybe just for color, I'll also add, nobody asked this question, I did several years ago do a similar work, piece of work for the city of Fargo when they looked at adding the Thorolson ethanol plant. And we had to justify allowing that facility to move forward. And we worked with what was Department of Water Resources, was the state water commission at the time. And they only required us to look back 20 years when they did that analysis. And then we presented that 20 years to Thorolson and they had to make the risk decision from there. But the water commission was willing to make a permit based on it, give us a permit based on a 20-year analysis and so recognize this would be 70 years rather than 20 years.
Thank you, Mr. Bierin. Any questions for Mr. Bierin? Mr. Veen, please.
The Thorolson plant gets their water as wastewater, right?
Mayor Bocinski, council member Veen, yes, that in that case, they run the water through the city of Fargo's water plant, run it through the city, run it through the wastewater plant, re-treat it with dual membranes and then send it out in a pipeline to near Castleton for use there.
But it is Fargo's wastewater as the source, not raw water from the river. Or, and Mr. Bierin, you've been working on the Red River Valley Water Supply Project almost as long as I have. We've done numerous studies. Garrison Diversion has spent 20 to 30 million dollars working with the Bureau of Reclamation identifying the issues of water shortage and water availability. In fact, the state water commission just came out with a new map of water availability that should be available here in the Red River or across the whole state, I guess, that's in there.
Which I've actually updated, but yeah.
Yeah, and there is that shortage. So what I've seen is flood protection projects are based on peak flows, drought contingency drought flows are based on low flows, not average flows or even the last 20 years. The risks of running out of water and the impacts of running out of water are too significant to try to be maybe overly, or too conservative on it. You need to be conservative, you need to look at history, you need to be able to look at what those impacts have because we have, and you've put together the report, a report that shows in a 30-style drought, we have, and it came out of your mouth, significant water shortages.
So is that a question or is that a statement?
No, that's true. That's true. I mean, we've had that. We've been studying this, we've been implementing this for years. And now we're looking at statistics based on an arbitrary period of time.
So Mayor Bocinski, Councilmember Veen, you know, I think there's different lenses at which to look at this, and this is just fact. at which to look at this, and this is just fact. This isn't, there isn't no gerrymandering, it's, we picked the 70-year period objectively because it's since Bald Hill Dam was built, you could pick a different period, but recognize it's much, much, much longer than other analyses I've done. If you are asking me, do I think in any way, shape, or form, does this change the necessity for the city of Grand Forks to fully support and move forward with the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, I will say emphatically no. Conversely, can this data be used by either the city of Grand Forks or Fu Fang to understand that for a majority of the time, Grand Forks should be in a really good position to serve Fu Fang with water until the Red River Valley Water Supply Project is completed? I think this does suggest that there's some potential for that.
I think you're right. I mean, you can say that there is the potential. Do we have any agreement from Fu Fang on anything like this?
Well, I would think then, this, Mayor Bocinski, Councilmember Veen, if, I've heard, and I'm not tied into that intimately, as you work on your utility agreements, I would think this is the type of data that you would use to recognize beyond the city's normal drought contingency plan, if you needed to do additional containment of industrial demands, this could be a tool to show when that frequency might exist and how you would go about doing that.
I'll just go on the record and say I think the risk is too high. I don't think that, these numbers haven't changed my mind one bit.
The risk is too high for?
Pardon?
For?
For the fact that we have significant water shortages, and it was stated in the earlier report that the water even behind Bald Hill Dam, of course, that's if it's available, cuts that water supply in half from two years to one year.
Anything further for Mr. Bearin? All right, thank you, Mr. Bearin.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Phelan, did you have anything else?
That's it for this evening, other than moving forward with the action items, and we're asking for no action items to be pulled from the administration.
All right, we've got item four, public hearings and second reassurances, there are none, so we'll move on to five action items. So any council members wishing to pull any items on, under the action items, please? What's that? Yeah, yep. 5.7, 5.8, 5.10? And 5.11? Thank you. Other items?
To be pulled?
Yeah.
5.11A, C, and D.
Yeah, we've got all 5.11. Yep. So we got 5.7, 5.8, 5.10, and 5.11 being pulled currently. Give you a chance to look through. All right, so we're looking for motion items 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.9, to include those multiple parts. So we're looking, got a motion to approve, we have a second, got a second, a motion from President Sandy, a second from Ms. Lunskey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. These motions carry unanimously. It's round to 5.7.
5.7, construction manager at risk, pre-construction services agreement for city project 8483 water treatment facility improvements and resolution of applicant.
Thank you. Ms. Oselsky, do you have any other, any comments regarding that, or any questions to follow? Okay. Anything further? Got a motion to approve 5.7. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Kavami online. Any further, any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
No.
So we got two noes, four two.
I think we should let the record show that Mr. Weigel has been cut off. He's tested and asked if Cheryl can put him back in.
Sounds good. So let's leave that as a 3-2 right now.
Didn't he? I thought he was just on.
All right, Ms. Simeone, if you can, see if you can get Councilmember Weigel back connected. Otherwise, we've got a 3-2 with Oselsky and Veen dissenting.
So 5.8 is the final design and bidding engineering services agreement for city project 8569 Grand Forks water treatment facility phase two design and reimbursement resolution.
All right, thank you. Again, was there any further discussion on that item? All right. Got a motion to approve from President Sandy. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Weigel online. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries four to two with Veen and Oselsky dissenting.
5.10, plans and specs for project 8485, District 589, stormwater pond for Highway 81 and associated area reimbursement resolution.
All right, thank you. Any further comment on that item? All right, seeing none. We got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Kavami, motion from President Sandy. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Got five to one with Oselsky dissenting.
5.11 is engineering task orders, A through D.
All right, I guess we'll look, any further comment on item 5.11?
Is anyone who wants to take these separately, or can we take them all as one? I'll make a motion for all of them together, but if they're separate.
I think we separate them.
Okay. I'm approval of 5.11A.
All right, we got a motion for 5.11A. Do we have a second for 5.11A? Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we'll take, we'll take Lunskey's second there. Any further comment on 5.11A? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Point two, is there? Ms. Oselsky, did you dissent on that one, too?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Oselsky, Mr. Veen dissent, four to two vote.
I can read N B if you want.
Okay.
N B then is project 8575, District 594, water main for Peony addition and Highway 81 area phase one.
All right, thank you. Any further comment on item 5.11B? Seeing that, we'd be looking for a motion.
Minimum.
We got a motion, we'll take, Danny, we'll give you a break, President Sandy. Any, we got a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Kavami. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Got five to one with Mr. Ms. Oselsky dissenting.
And then C is the project 8578, raw water supply.
Same thing, any further comment? That item, seeing none. Have a motion? Got a motion from President Sandy, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second from, we'll take Mr. Weigel's second. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Got four to two with Veen and Oselsky dissenting.
And D, project 8580, sanitary force main from lift station number 50 to North 42nd Street.
All right, one more time, any comment on the item? All right, seeing none, we have a motion on the item?
Minimum.
Got a motion from President Sandy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Kavami. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
We got four to two with Oselsky and Veen dissenting. All right, moving on to six information items.
6.1 is your statement of changes in cash balances of July 31st.
Thank you. Item seven, approval of minutes and bills.
And 7.1 is the vendor list and engineer's estimate is presented.
All right, we got a motion to approve the vendor list and engineer's estimate.
The bills, man.
Got a motion from President Sandy and a second from Mr. Weigel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 7.2 is minutes from April 18th.
Motion to prove as is. Got a motion from President Sandy, do we have a second? To approve the minutes, Ms. Lunskey approves the minutes, there are seconds to that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved unanimously. Mr. Phelan, eight city administrator comments, any comments this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, we're moving on to nine, mayor and council member comments. We'll start with Mr. Weigel, any comments this evening, Councilmember Weigel?
Just briefly, Mayor, thank you again for all your work with the Back to Badge ride. I think it was a great event, great turnout, and I know the law enforcement community enjoys your support.
Thank you, Mr. Weigel. Ms. Oselsky, any comments this evening? No comments. Mr. Weber, we got Ms. Lunskey, any comments?
No.
All right, Mr. Kavami, any comments this evening?
No, thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Veen, any comments?
There would be one request on my behalf, on my behalf. There was a lot of information given out tonight, and there were presentations that were made here, but so little time to react to it. When I see it for the first time and then have to vote on it or try to respond to it, if we could have some of those done during the committee of the whole meeting, so we'd have the time to be able to digest it, it would certainly be helpful for me to be able to look at that. Just my.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Phelan, you think you can handle that? Yep, there we go. Mr. Sandy, any comments this evening?
Mr. Mayor, there were several, during council or citizen comments, there were several questions asked, and I think it would only take a couple minutes to answer a few of those questions. I think some of the people are still here, and it might make it easier. I think there was a question asked about why the Corinta property wasn't annexed. Mr. Gosstead, can you provide a quick rundown as to why they weren't part of the annexation?
Because there's an agreement that you can't annex that property without their consent. There is, precludes it.
Can you respond again? But there's an annexation agreement upon any transfer of that land or death or anything, then that would automatically be annexed, otherwise they would need to sell it to another property, is that correct?
There is an agreement that precludes the annexation of that parcel.
Right, which is why they were not included as part of this annexation area, but there are triggers that will trigger the annexation, either whenever they sell the property or if they, I don't.
I think if there's a transfer of the property, which could be a sale or some other ways.
Yes, so at some point in the future, they will automatically be annexed into the city.
I'm not sure it's an automatic trigger, but the barrier for annexation would go away.
Thank you very much, okay.
Excuse me, ma'am, you're disrupting, excuse me, ma'am, you are disrupting the meeting, please. Ma'am, sir, please.
Sir, please.
Mr. Sandy, please continue, this is your time.
I'm trying to get questions answered that were asked tonight, so thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was a comment and a question about why the council didn't follow Planning and Zoning's annexation recommendation. Mr. Gosstead, I know the answer of why we didn't. Do you recall, and if you don't, I'm happy to say that.
I do, because there was the planning and zoning aspect to look into the issue of a contingent annexation. I briefed the planning and zoning that I didn't believe based upon the case law, that I had read that you could do a contingent annexation. There were other pragmatic issues about what would be the triggering event, who would make the decision. If you go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I went through a series of reasons why the contingent annexation would not be appropriate.
Right, and they ultimately voted to move the annexation forward, correct, without the contingency.
That is my understanding, correct.
And then the city council actually supported what they had voted for.
That there was no change in what the planning and zoning, what it came out from planning and zoning.
That is 100% correct. Someone mentioned raw water, and raw water used for food products and byproducts that are sent to the landfill, and that raw water can't be used for food products. I think Mr. Shooter Ash is on, but correct me if I'm wrong, although they are taking raw water to their facility, they aren't using raw water in the production of anything. I believe they're creating their own water treatment plant on their site and treating the water prior to using it. But don't take my word for it, perhaps Mr. Shooter Ash or Mr. Phelan wants to confirm that.
I would defer to Mr. Shooter Ash in what they're planning to do once they receive raw water.
Once they receive the raw water, thank you. Hopefully, Mr. Shooter Ash is, that looks like, yeah, please.
Just saying, that's correct. We use a lot of different qualities of water in our plants, and we bring in raw water, and we treat it up to the different types of quality we need for different parts of the process.
Thank you, Mr. Shooter Ash, and therefore, any byproducts wouldn't fall under the raw water categories because they would be treated water. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. Mr. Gosstead, thank you for all of your openness. Mr. Shooter Ash, I really appreciate you coming on today, and we'll look forward to seeing you here in council chambers again sometime soon. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, President Sandy. Just want to thank everybody for coming. Again, we do appreciate the comments every council meeting, so thank you again. With that, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn. Got a motion to adjourn, a second from Ms. Oselsky, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.